Good evening and welcome to the March 25, 2024 meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Vice Chair Jennifer Schindler, and I thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely or in person here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body. That's the city council. We are a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals on public and private lands for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission reviews all development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as the recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, environmental reviews, and below-market rate or BMR housing agreements associated with those projects. We encourage -- we work closely with the staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for enforcing enforcement of zoning ordinances and related policy. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or an interested member of the public, and there will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each agenda item, as well as for general public comment. With that, I will bring this meeting to order and call the roll. Commissioner Barnes.
Good evening, President.
Commissioner Eric.
Present.
Commissioner Farrak.
Here.
Commissioner Riggs.
Present.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Here.
And I am Vice Chair Schindler, and I am present. Chair Doe is absent tonight, so we have six commissioners in chambers, which is a quorum. The next item on our agenda is reports and announcements. Mr. Prada, are there any reports or announcements this evening?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Schindler and members of the planning commission. So a couple of updates for the commission. So tomorrow evening, the city council at its meeting will review and consider a resolution accepting the 2023 Housing Element Annual Progress Report that the planning commission previously reviewed and recommended on. And then another item that the planning commission may be interested in is that the city council will also hear a presentation on the Caltrain Electrification Project and city partnerships. So that might be of interest to some commissioners, but I wanted to highlight the Housing Element Annual Progress Report. And that concludes my reports and announcements, but happy to answer any questions.
Do commissioners have any questions or follow-up for those announcements from Mr. Prada? Great, thank you. Then we will move on to the next section of our agenda, which is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. You're not required to provide your name, district, neighborhood, or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. Please note that if you are here tonight to comment on one of our agenda items, you will have a chance to speak when that agenda, when that item is up for discussion and on the agenda. So to learn how to participate, I'm going to turn it over to our clerk this evening, Ms. Beegan, to explain how you can participate under public comment.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Regarding procedures for communicating, for those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we kindly ask that you turn on your microphone and webcam during your presentation for your item. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling into tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. For any members of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or phone line with another commenter during this meeting, please inform staff at the start of your public comment, and staff will ensure that the other commenter speaks after you have finished your comment. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. With that said, I hand it back to you, Chair Schindler.
Thank you, Ms. Beegan. At this point, do we have any requests to speak under Agenda Item D, Public Comment, either in person or online?
I do not see any hands raised online and have not received any comment cards in person. If you would like, we can give it a few more minutes.
Yeah, let's give it just 10 more seconds.
At this time, I do not see any hands raised or have not received comment cards.
Thank you for checking. Given that we have no requests to speak either in person or online, I will now close Agenda Item D, the public comment portion of our agenda. The next item on our agenda is E, the Consent Calendar. Tonight, there are three items on the consent calendar. E1 is approval of the meeting minutes from the March 27, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. E2 is approval of the meeting minutes from the February 26, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. And E3 is approval of the meeting minutes from the March 11, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. As one of these sets of meetings is from quite some time ago, from the first part of 2023, when several of the current commissioners were not yet on the commission. I was going to ask if staff would please give us some clarity on what options are for commissioners to consider the meeting minutes for those meetings, where they may not have been a member of the commission or may not have been present for that particular meeting.
Sure, thanks, Vice Chair Schindler. So first, yes, there is a meeting minutes from a March 2023 meeting. That's not typical. Staff recognizes that this, these minutes fell through the cracks. We are working to get all of our minutes updated online and notice that this did not receive a vote approving it previously. With that said, the commission or individual commissioners have had a practice over the years, at least in the time that I've been here at the city, of not voting on meeting minutes that they were not in attendance for. That's certainly not required. Individual commissioners, all commissioners can vote on the minutes, regardless of whether or not they were in attendance at the meeting. Really just reaffirms confidence in their other commissioners who were at the meeting to confirm the minutes are accurate and then also reconfirm staff's summary of the meeting. And so there's nothing that precludes commissioners from participating. So this evening, we understand that only a few commissioners were here on, at that meeting. We would appreciate additional commissioners participating in the vote for the minutes for that item, understanding the commission's tradition of not voting on minutes where they were not in attendance.
Thank you for clarifying that essentially both, both may happen. A commissioner may vote whether they were present or not, or a commissioner may choose not to vote, may abstain. I was at the meeting on March 27 of last year, so I am able to weigh in both on the accuracy of the minutes, at least to my recollection. And I will be, so I am not going to pull that particular item from the consent calendar, but this is when I will ask if there are any other commissioners who would like to pull any of the three items from the consent calendar.
Thank you. When you say pull, just in layman's terms, I will need to abstain on E1. So I'll need that bifurcated out from the other two so I can vote abstain on it. So if that's pulling, would you please pull that?
Great. So we have a request from Commissioner Barnes to pull E1 from the consent calendar. Any other quest, any other items to be pulled?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Riggs?
I request that item E2 be pulled. He's not present.
Okay, we are pulling E2. I think so, we now have three individual items. And we will then, let's see, so we're going to, which we will discuss and vote on separately. Before we get into, before we get into voting on them, not discussion, we will call, I'll call for public comment on the three items that were submitted originally as part of the consent calendar. Ms. Beegan, could you call for public comment on those E1, E2, and E3 from the consent calendar?
Sure, yeah. As a reminder, you're welcome to speak on this public comment period by raising your hand with the hand icon in Zoom or by pressing star nine by phone. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. At this time, I do not see any hands raised and have not received any comment cards.
We'll give it a few more seconds. Still no request?
No requests.
All right, thank you. Then we will, I will close public comment on the three items from the consent calendar. And we'll pull, let's see, since we're going to separate out E1, E2, and E3, may we proceed, may we just, is there an appetite for discussion? Or shall we discuss each of the topic, Mr. Prada?
I would recommend, at this point, just voting on each individually.
Okay.
We took public comment, or we opened it up for public comment for the consent calendar as a whole, but pulling two items, I think it's in the commission's interest to just make motions and seconds on E1, 2, and 3 individually.
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question for staff? Given that we have six members of the commission present, for the E1 to pass, we need four out of that, out of these six members to vote affirmative, is that correct? Or is it the majority of members who vote if there are abstentions?
Yeah, it's the majority of those voting if there are abstentions, yes. Thank you, Commissioner Silverstein.
So just to be really clear, if, let's say, two people voted affirmatively and four people abstained, that would be a pass on the resolution, or?
No, I should clarify. I think in that instance, you do need a majority, so three, you need a minimum of three to pass the minutes if you're talking about the six that are present this evening, yes.
Point of order.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yeah, Mr. Prada, could we just double-check with Robert's rules? I believe three out of six is not a majority, and an action is not successful with a vote of three out of six. Is that correct?
So I know that legally, we looked into this actually this morning. So for these minutes, we just need a majority of those present to vote to pass it. I can pull the government code section. So for today, for these minutes, we need three votes to get each of the minutes passed.
I'm sorry, are you counting three out of six as a majority? This is new to me. Can you clarify?
We, we discussed it this morning with the city attorney as well, and we confirmed that it would be 350% as the majority of those present. So I don't, maybe Kyle, you guys have done something differently, but we, we would go with three.
Commissioner Farrak, did you have a further clarification or request or comment?
A comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am, you know, given that you, Chair, or Acting Chair, Vice Chair Schindler, has commented to the accuracy of the minutes despite my not being there, I'm, stand ready to vote to pass these minutes.
As do I.
Thank you. I think with that additional, those additional comments, we should proceed to voting. So I will call vote for item E1, the minutes for March 27, 2023. Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you, I was not present, I will abstain.
Through the, through the chair, I'm sorry.
Yeah, please.
I think we do need a motion and second. I think we're, it seems like there is some motion and second up there, but if it can be vocalized for the community.
Thank you, all right. So we need a motion as it relates to E1, please.
I will move to pass the minutes of 3/27/23, item E1.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Commissioner Farrak and a second from Commissioner Eric. I will call vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Abstain.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Abstain.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
And I was present and will also vote yes. So that is two abstentions and four yeses. The E1 passes. Do we have a motion as it relates to item E2, the minutes from February 26, 2024?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a first from Commissioner Farrak and a second from Commissioner Eric calling the vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Abstain, I was not present.
And Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
I also am a yes, so that is one abstention and five yeses. And I guess one absence as well. Commissioner, Chair Doe is not present. So we have passed E2. E3, which is our final item from the original consent calendar, do we have a first and second as it relates to this recommendation?
I'll move to approve the 3/11/24 minutes, item E3.
Item E3.
And a second.
Thank you. We have a first from Commissioner Farrak and a second from Commissioner Riggs. We'll call the vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so that is six yeses. And with that, we have, I will close the consent calendar and three items there and move on to the next section of our agenda, the public hearing. Item F1. This item addresses the use permit at 108 Blackburn Avenue. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to remodel and add first and second-story additions to an existing non-conforming one-story, single-family residence on a lot that is substandard with regard to minimum lot width, depth, and area in the R1U Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District at 108 Blackburn Avenue. The proposed work would exceed 50% of the replacement value of the existing non-conforming structure over a 12-month period and would also exceed 50% of the existing floor area and therefore is considered equivalent to a new structure. Determine this action is categorically exempt under Sequel Guidelines, Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. Ms. Khan, are there updates or a presentation from staff or from the applicant?
Good evening, Vice Chair Schindler, fellow planning commissioners and members of the public. There is currently no updates to the staff report. Excuse my voice. We do have the property owners as well as their designer present here at City Hall. They are able to give a brief verbal presentation. Staff does not have any presentation on this project. Thank you.
I think that would be a lovely time for me to recuse myself. It's in the proximity of my home, and I think there's another commissioner as well, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes.
Stage left.
Yes.
What he said.
And Commissioner Eric will be recusing themselves. We will let you know when this, when item F1 is, is finished. And if the applicant would love to, like to come forward, Just a moment, let's get that microphone activated for you.
Yes, it's fine now. Yep. Good evening, thank you guys for having us. My name is Wahid Taslimi, and this is my wife, Hala, and our great architect Rocha Shah here with us. A couple of quick words, you know, a quick, you know, introduction. We are living in California for eight years. We live in different cities, Sunnyvale, San Jose, and we are really happy that finally we had the moment to move to Menlo Park. Great city, you know. We don't have any kids, but we are planning to expand our families, specifically because we are moving to Menlo Park. Great school, really kids-friendly neighborhood. And a couple, and you know, very important, our both workplaces very close to Menlo Park. We don't have to stuck in traffic 40 minutes every day, and this is really good for us. A couple of points about the project. We wanted to, you know, do lots of renovation and also add a second floor. Overall, one of the main goals that we had to not having a really completely different house from the neighborhood. Majority of the house around us, they are already having the second floor or they are in the process to get the permit to build a second floor. That was one option that we considered in our design. Another option was about the elevation of the buildings. We didn't want it to be, again, extremely different from the neighborhood. Now it's a mixture of modern and, you know, contemporary California style. That's another thing. One of the things that was important for us as our great city planner provided multiple recommendations, that was about the privacy risk. And because we both love huge windows and lots of lights, and we did our best to mitigate the risk of privacy. For example, we added frosty windows for the second floor on the right side. On the left side, the windows are already narrow. Also, even for the second, first floor, for the left side, to make sure that there is no privacy risk, although the building was fencing the fence, we added plantings to make sure that it is already covered. Other than that, Rocha is here. If you guys have any other questions, we definitely can answer those questions. And thank you, guys.
Thank you. We're glad you're here. Before we move to public comment on F1, are there any clarifying questions from our commissioners? Given that there are no follow-up questions from commissioners at this time, clarifying questions. Ms. Beegan, could you call for public comment, please, on F1?
Yes, thank you, Chair Schindler. As a reminder, you're welcome to speak on this public comment period by raising your hand with the hand icon in Zoom or by pressing star nine on your phone. If you're participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. And as of right now, I do not see any hands raised and have not received any comment cards, but we can give it a minute if you, if you would like.
Yep, just give it a few more seconds. Any hands raised?
I can confirm that there have not been any public comments.
Thank you, Ms. Beegan. As there are no hands raised or cards submitted in person, I will now close public comment on item F1 and move the discussion back to the commission. F4, and ultimately for a motion on F1.
My only comment is I just wanted to give some context. While I do not live as close to this project site as the two commissioners who recuse themselves, I do live in that general neighborhood. I think I'm maybe about 1,000 feet down the street. Welcome to the neighborhood, it sounds like a great project.
Thank you, Commissioner Silverstein. Comments or questions from other commissioners on this item?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak?
Thank you, I'll just be brief. And I appreciate the thought given to the placement of the windows, particularly on the second story to help maintain privacy and neighborhood harmony. And I also noted that it's nice that you not only have some nice ceiling heights, but it actually doesn't add up to the max height of the building, and just appreciate that too. And it looks like it'll be a really well-designed, laid-out home. So, yeah, again, I'll echo the welcome to Menlo Park.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrak. Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, I would like to, have we already had public comment?
Yes, we have had public comment, and we did not have any speakers.
Then I would like to move to approve the project. I think this is going to be an attractive addition to the neighborhood.
I'll go ahead and second that, if that's okay.
Thank you. We have a first from Commissioner Riggs, a second from Commissioner Farrak. I will simply add that I also found the project and all of the details to be appealing. I enjoyed, I really thought the variances in roof lines and step backs and the material, the combination of all of those made it very attractive, and I appreciate the attention that was given to privacy on the bottom half of the windows with the, having the obscured glass in that second-floor bedroom on the left side of the house. If there are no further comments, questions from commissioners, I will call vote of those who are still remaining in the room. Commissioner Farrak?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. So that is four yeses, two abstentions. Congratulations, thank you for being here this evening.
Sorry, really quick point of order. I don't think those were abstentions, those were recusals.
Pardon?
It wasn't, it wasn't two abstentions, it was two recusals. I think that's different in terms of the actual account.
Thank you, very important, not recusals. Two, yes, two folks who have, do not recuse themselves, not abstentions, thank you. All right, take a brief moment Take a brief moment and bring our commissioners back into the room for our next item. All right. With all of our commissioners back in the room, we will, I will now move us on to agenda item F2. This agenda item addresses the use permit for 919 Arnold Way. Commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to partially demolish, remodel, and add first and second-story additions to an existing non-conforming, single-story, single-family residence in the R1U Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District at 919 Arnold Way. The proposed work would exceed 50% of the replacement value of the existing non-conforming structure in a 12-month period. The applicant is also requesting to maintain a wall six feet in height within the front setback at approximately 14.8 feet from the property line, and determine this action is categorically exempt under Secure Guidelines, Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. The proposal also includes the addition of an accessory dwelling unit or ADU, which is a permitted use and not subject to discretionary review. Mr. Hochleitner, are there any updates to the staff report?
Sorry. Good evening, Vice Chair Schindler and other commissioners. There are no updates to the staff report to provide. The project applicant is available virtually, online, to answer any questions for you, but there is no other presentation staff or otherwise.
Great. And the applicant is, so the applicant is here online, but does not have a presentation, correct?
That's correct. No presentation.
Thank you. So with that context, before we move to public comment on item F2, I'll ask if there are commissioners have any clarifying questions about the staff or from the staff report? Okay. Thank you. No clarifying questions. Ms. Began, could you please call for public comment on item F2?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. As a reminder, you're welcome to speak on this public comment period by raising your hand with the hand icon on Zoom or by pressing star nine by phone. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. As of right now, I do not see any hands raised online and have not received any comment cards. We can give it a minute if you'd like.
Thank you. We'll give it another five seconds.
I can confirm that I've not received any comment cards and do not see any hands online.
Thank you very much. Then I will move ahead and close public comment on item F2 and move into commission discussion and ultimately a motion. Commissioner, comments or questions?
Yes, I maybe should have said this in clarifying comments, but in attachment C, the data table towards the end of the agenda packet for this item, it says that the building height is going to be 17.8 feet. When looking at the architecture drawings, it looks like that is higher than 17.8. Can I get clarification on that? Thank you.
I believe that's a question maybe perhaps for the applicant if they can pull that up? Or staff, if that's available?
I should be able to clarify that. Give me just one second.
Thank you.
And at least from my understanding, according to the diagrams on page 100 of the agenda packet, which I think is sheet A6 dot 1, it shows the building height to be 24.8 feet, or I guess that's 24 feet 8 inches.
The total height is 25 feet 5 inches. So that's a typo on my part. I'm sorry about that.
So 25 5 inches or 25?
25 feet 5 inches.
Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Farrak.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schindler. I have a question for, for either the applicant or the architect. I'm just kind of curious about what the thought is on not having a window on the second-floor rear elevation or the north elevation on the right side of the house, right as you face the house, from the north elevation? I didn't know if that was desired or reaction to neighbor input or what that was, why there weren't any windows.
I'm the architect, and I speak?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm Linda Jones. Then was it the west wall you're asking? North and west wall?
Rear and north. I'm looking at plan sheet A22 and plan sheet A21. Or actually, I guess it's sheet A5 dot 3 is another way it's labeled.
Okay. So that on the west wall, which is rear, second floor, that's a, on the interior, there's a lot of furniture along that wall, and a window would be, would interfere with the furniture. So the two windows on the south side where is all this needed, one for the light that they need, the light that's required for a building department, it gives a proper amount of ventilation, and we could get egress. So for their living, it works really well.
So I mean, on the second floor, and that doesn't exist yet, so I assume there's no furniture there yet?
Well, there will be furniture. We designed based on furniture as part of the design. So on the second-floor bedroom, I assume that's what you're talking about, bedroom three, I think it is.
So is the, is there any windows that allow light in from the outside on the second floor, kind of, I guess, on the west side of the second floor?
No, no windows. We didn't want any there because of furniture layout inside the bedroom.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Riggs, did you have?
I do.
Great.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions, and I'm glad to see the architect available. I do want to comment that it's very nice to see the decorative windows repeated on the second floor. I think this will be.
I'm sorry. Through the chair, could you speak up, Commissioner Riggs? We can barely hear you.
I'm not sure the mic is, is fully picking you up.
Is this any better? I'm barely hearing it myself, I'll have to admit. So I was saying that I appreciated that the decorative windows of the original building were being repeated, in some cases on the second floor. I did also want to just confirm, there is a note in the staff report that the hardy siding will match the existing siding used on the first floor. I just wanted to confirm that the 5 inches exposed, or whatever the number is, specifically will be repeated at the second floor. I wonder if Mr. Jones could confirm that? Did he go away?
Is Mr. Jones still available and able to turn on his, his mic?
I didn't realize I was muted.
Thank you.
So because they are different materials, on the first floor is a redwood siding we call V rustic, has a V groove in it. And it's a cement composite material for the second floor. There will be some differences, but it will give the same appearance. You will still, still have that shadowing that will come with a groove in the board, so there will be a similar look. You'd have to get pretty close to pull those two finishes together. There's nowhere where they're really a good view, where you would see them completely. Yes, there will be a slight difference, unavoidable.
Had to do with the face dimension. If it's 5 inches exposed on the first floor, will it be 5 inches exposed on the second floor?
That's the intent, that it'll look very much the same. I can't say there's going to be exactly the same dimension, but it'll be close, where it won't be noticeable.
In, in my experience, the architect tells the builder what the exposed face dimension is. Are you willing to ask that they match the exposed face dimension?
Oh, yes. We'll, we'll tell them which material to pick and, and to buy, and that will fit with the existing first-floor wall.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I, I did want to just comment to the owners, this is not going to be an aspect of approval or disapproval, but when you have multiple bedrooms, you often have more than one car. When you have an ADU, you generally have an additional car that has a different schedule than your household. So I just thought I would suggest that the owners take the opportunity to think this through before landscape is complete. And then it happens that I made quite the same notes as Commissioner Farrak regarding the absence of windows on the second floor. It is, it makes for an awkward look in a neighborhood to have a full width of an upper floor, have no windows in it. And that applies to both the right side or north elevation and to the rear elevation. Furniture tends to go in nearly all bedrooms, so I was a little bit caught by surprise that you and the client felt that furniture and windows were incompatible. Would it be possible to reconsider that conclusion to at least some degree?
So I don't think we said they're incompatible. So we have two windows where they really make sense on the south wall. The north wall, I mean, the west wall will be where the main bed and their sideboards, nightstands and lights and sconces on the wall will be. The window interfered with making that work well. Instead, so that we have room around the bed, room to get into the closet.
You'll forgive us. We see a number of second-floor additions here at the planning commission from month to month and year to year. We very rarely see blank walls presented on the second floor. Again, would you and the client be willing to reconsider the absence of windows on those two walls?
Yeah, that would be a discussion I have to have with my client. The only option we would have be, since we do have a little vaulted space in there, there's one up high. And I talked to them about that, and they want a room that they can isolate the light they need it blacked out. So the two windows helped with that. Adding another one up high would be, be another challenge to having blackout shades on, on that one as well. But that would probably be the only place that would work for the way we're laying out the room interior. Just put one up high on the wall.
I, I sympathize with the concern. I mean, I worked nights for two years, and it was relatively important to have darkness in the bedroom at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. Blackout shades were indeed the option. Also did one project that included a exterior window frame, but no actual window. It's an aesthetic issue, and it's for the benefit of the neighborhood, and that's why it has occurred to a couple of us here on the commission. How would we determine some flexibility on your part?
Let's see, I'm getting a comment from my client, that she says she's not able to comment, she was wanting to. Let me see what she's telling me here. And I'll, let me just look at her text really quick.
Through the chair, the property owners are on Zoom right now, and so we can activate them and allow them to speak if you would like to ask them directly.
Yes, please, that would be great. If we could please activate the Zoom and the microphones for, do we know?
The other, there was no view out that west wall for the clients. It was a, it's commercial property beyond, they didn't see a need for, for them to have a window. I, I don't mind that blank wall. I think it actually looks attractive. I didn't realize that a blank wall was, was a distraction or an aesthetic issue in the structure.
In that case, what about the north elevation? Does that also face a commercial property?
No, that one's facing neighbors, but the area that I think you're talking about are no windows is where the laundry room is and the closet.
Well, it's, it's about a 25-foot space here. Or maybe a 20-foot wall to the right of the gable. And this is on your north elevation, your sheet A5.4.
Yeah. So we have the windows at the stairwell. I think there are three windows there, and then there's a window from one, the front bedroom on the north side, and there's none in the laundry room, nowhere to put one in the laundry room. And then the closet is the final piece, long closet. I don't recommend windows in closets, brings in light that you don't need. We're protecting them with, even though we have sun tunnels in there, we're going to make sure we don't get the wrong kind of light on the clothing.
All right. Thank you for your explanation.
Do we have the ability to, to give the homeowners an, an opportunity to speak? Thank you.
Hi, Morgan. I'm going to activate your microphone now. Thanks.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Great. So I think Linda summed it up pretty well. The back west-facing wall faces a big oak tree, faces a commercial property that is, that opens out to Willow, and then it's Willow Road, like, right there. It's, it's very close. We don't particularly want to have a window overlooking Willow Road and this commercial property. On the north side, it is going to be our closet and the laundry room. The stairwell does have windows. And, you know, if it's, if it's a concern, we could frame a window, but I don't think we want a window in our master closet necessarily. It's also fairly close to the property there. On the south windows have, have our yard, and so we'll be looking out over the yard. We have a big Japanese maple right there that, that will kind of block the view into the neighbor's yard, so we won't have any privacy issues. North-facing windows, other than those ones in the stairwell, which are more for light, could introduce privacy issues as well.
Thank you for your feedback.
Sure. Let me know if you have other questions.
Thank you. Other commissioners? I think Commissioner Farrak had another question.
But, yeah, no, the, the explanation helps understand the context of the back, you know, how, you know, the Willow-facing side of the house and the tree, and, and then on the side that kind of would make sense to balance it out. It's actually kind of that, that long expanse that's very close. I mean, one of the reasons that we're weighing in on this is that the side setbacks are very, very small and are, you know, able to continue to be the same as they are today. So adding a second story does introduce a pretty close cozy relationship with your neighbors, so that helps. Thank you.
Commissioners?
I can't see. Light, light on?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Silverstein?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly respond to the comment by Commissioner Riggs about only having one parking spot. I do believe that there are two off-street parking spots for this property, only one of which is able to count as per the municipal code, but they do have the opportunity. And if you look in Google Street View, there are currently two cars parked in, in and on this property off-street. That being said, I'm also not particularly concerned if someone wants to have one car, and that's all they need.
Thank you. At this point, I'll add in with just a couple, one more question for the, the applicant. I was hoping to get a little more color on the part, on the component of neighbor outreach. The staff report says that there was outreach to neighbors, information was shared, but I was interested in just a little bit more commentary on the timing, the nature of that outreach, and the nature of the responses.
I'd be happy to jump in on that. So our, we know all of our neighbors fairly well, but the neighbor on the south side, it's, it's a double unit, they're rentals. We do know those people, we've talked to them about the construction, but being renters, they aren't the, the homeowners, or the, their, their tenants currently. We have also talked to all three neighbors on the north side. They all have kids, they all actually go to the same bus stop we do to drop our kids off, to go to Lower Laurel Elementary School. So we've talked to them there, offered to send the plans, described the second-story addition. They've often asked us for updates. I think we first talked to them last October when we submitted everything. And we, yeah, we've been chatting with them throughout the process. They got the notice, they let me know recently. And then our across-the-street neighbors have also, we've talked to them about it, we've sent them the plans, they've been very supportive. And, yeah, nobody's really raised any concerns.
Thank you. Appreciate that additional detail.
Sure.
Any further comments or questions? Any further comments or questions from commissioners? Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, I'd like to move approval of the use permit for the staff report.
We have a first from Commissioner Riggs.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Eric. And if there are no further comments or questions, I am not seeing any, we will go ahead and vote on this use permit. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is six yeses. Thank you for being here and congratulations and moving ahead with your project.
Thank you.
All right. And now we will move on to F3, the next item on our agenda, which is the annual review of the development agreement for Middle Plaza at 500 El Camino Real. This public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to determine that Stanford University has demonstrated good faith compliance with the provisions of the Middle Plaza at 500 El Camino Real Development Agreement for the period of May 2022 through March 2024. Review of the development agreement does not qualify as a project under SEQA. Ms. Sandmeyer, are there updates from the staff report or a presentation?
Good evening. There's no updates to the staff report. We do have the applicant here to provide a brief update or a brief overview. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is John Donahoe. I'm with Stanford University Real Estate. Happy to see some somewhat familiar faces. It's been a while since I've been before you. This project, the Middle Plaza project dates back, has a long history. Our original application was made in November of 2012, believe it or not. It is within the downtown, excuse me, the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan. And as you can see from Karina's staff report, it was approved by the city in 2017. So the development agreement can be relatively complicated. In this case, this is a relatively specific development agreement, if that's a term. It affects just a couple of things. One was the potential that Stanford had offered to make a contribution to funding a portion of the grade separated crossing at Middle Avenue. And the development agreement was used to essentially memorialize that contribution or that offer of contribution. And there's details in that that I'm happy to answer if you have any specific questions. There was also a contribution to the educational foundation that was completed. And then there are a couple references with regard to affordable housing. At one point, Stanford had a relatively small office project that was envisioned along Sand Hill Road and instead of making an in-lu payment at that time, we were going to go ahead and actually add additional affordable housing units to the Middle Plaza project. Unfortunately, that other project, 2131 Sand Hill Road, was ultimately not approved by the city council. So those units aren't involved in this. But then, other than that, I'm just available for any questions. Again, a relatively focused development agreement.
Thank you. Before we move to public comment on this agenda item, are there any clarifying questions from commissioners? Great. Seeing none. Ms. Beegan, could you please call for public comment on item F3?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. As a reminder, you are welcome to speak on this public comment period by raising your hand with the hand icon on Zoom or by pressing star nine if calling in by phone. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. At this time, I do not see any hands raised and have not received any comment cards. We can give it a minute to see if any come in.
Thank you. Yeah, let's give it another five or 10 seconds.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. At this time, I do not see any hands raised and have not received any comment cards.
Thank you. Then I will go ahead and close public comment on item F3 and move the discussion back to the commission and for discussion and ultimately for a motion. Do we have comments or questions from the commission?
Thank you. I have one quick one and I think it would be for you, Mr. Donahoe, about the BMR units. It's more of a it's not really, you know, predicated on a green. I'm just curious about what you would view as the challenge of filling the affordable units. I noticed there's four that are still vacant. Is there, you know, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, they're moving along actually quite well. So just a broader question, because I was hoping someone would ask. The residential units on a whole are approximately 77% occupied. And again, they're being occupied by Stanford affiliate people. So we're also bringing along the BMRs at that point. We don't want to put a BMR unit in a part of the project that we haven't fully activated yet. However, so the four that are remaining, I think, as you probably know better than I, the city has recently changed their contract help for affordable housing or some of the BMR implementation, which is slightly delaying those last four. I believe there's going to be new standards put in place by the city. But I contacted Stanford's faculty staff housing and they still anticipate that those last four would be occupied probably within the next 60 days.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Eric?
Thank you. Sorry. I had a question or questions along similar lines. I have no issue with this item and plan to support it, but I was just curious for your overall take on how Stanford is feeling about the development. Has it been helpful to Stanford affiliates? Do you expect full occupancy soon in the future?
Yeah, certainly. I mean, I would say just overall, this was probably one of the more complicated projects that Stanford's taken on for a variety of reasons. There was a history of public controversy when we first made the application, but even setting that aside, keep in mind we're located between the Caltrans right of way, the Hetch Hetchy Waterline and Caltrain tracks. And there are various utilities that cross the site that all needed to be relocated before we built a site that basically is underground parking across the entire frontage. So it's a very, very complicated project. I think at this point, from what I've heard from faculty staff housing, they're very pleased with the response for the units. I don't anticipate that we would have a problem fully occupying them over time. You know, keep in mind, we're 77% occupied and we just kind of came online like summer of last year. So it hasn't been that long, really.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to hear it. It's not surprising given the overall shortage of housing in Menlo Park, but good to know that we'll be making a dent in that. On a personal level, I will just say I'm not an architect, but looking at that site, it seems extraordinarily difficult to build on and to make useful. And every time I go by it, I really do admire what was able to be done on a site that's pretty challenging. So kudos to you.
I think we all appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening, Mr. Donahoe.
Donahoe.
Donahoe. I do remember we had conversations when this project was.
Low these many years ago.
Yes, it feels like a while ago. One is a, my first question is a practical question. When I'm driving past the subject property, I see signs, A-frames, which are soliciting folks to apply, like for lease. And it doesn't call out, it doesn't specify that, A, they're looking for Stanford individuals nor I mean, I don't know that would call out looking for folks that are interested in a BMR unit, but what are those for lease signs? Who are they targeting when they say, you know, come submit an application? What's the intent of those?
I think, you know, we clearly in today's world, I think 90% of the traffic is probably off the internet. But when you have something like El Camino Real, it doesn't hurt to remind people. And again, it is Stanford affiliates. In fact, I hadn't even noticed them. So I'm pleased that you brought that up and I want to take a look at that myself. But essentially, sometimes it's also for somewhat of a directional purpose. So as people come in, they kind of know where to aim to go in and find the leasing office. But generally speaking, most of our efforts have been online of people soliciting the website and then they get all of the information they need as a Stanford affiliate and how they could qualify for that.
Got it. So if I jingle, if I called in, I would get filtered for those parameters?
Definitely, definitely. In a very polite way. Yes.
Thanks for calling, bud. Second question has to do with the retail. And this is the retail looking at the subject property far left, right where the middle crossing is going to come under, that, I don't know, it's a three-story building.
Yes.
What's the vision for that ground floor retail?
So we have a tenant. They're in the process of making tenant improvements. We hope to have them open hopefully by this summer. I don't want to, I'll say June, or excuse me, I'll say July, June or July, and then I'll probably be wrong, but that's the date we're aiming for. There currently is at least one restaurant making, I think they have active permits and they're in the process of constructing. So they're intending to be open in June as well. And then the retail operation is also hoping to be open. So right now it is retail in terms of a jewelry store or jewelry operation, but they have leased a significant portion of the building and they're not planning to use all that building up front. At this time, as we all know, we're still in kind of this rebound area from COVID where certainly our offices in terms of leasing those buildings have been retarded a little bit. I had hoped that we would have been further along. Same with the retail to a certain degree. And I think we just need a little more time for things to settle out. But we do have a tenant who has leased the entire building, is using a portion of it for various jewelry and watch sales and at least one, possibly two restaurants in that building.
Got it. And the retail is only the ground floor or is it first floor and second floor?
They're actually looking at first and second floor. I'm looking to Karina, who's probably seen the plans more recently than I have. I haven't seen the plans lately.
Well, certainly anything that activates the spaces is welcome. So appreciate that. My third question has to do with the general timeframe that, as you understand, is being contemplated for the completion of the under the crossing tunnel. What do you know about that in terms of timeframe?
I think actually Karina did a great job in the staff report. She actually put in more detail than I think I was aware of. So essentially, we have committed the money as part of the development agreement, but the city basically has to hit certain milestones in order to, in essence, request that we provide our contribution. And I believe that the city has made what by all means substantial process in the design. But I heard in your introductory at the start of the meeting, a lot of the ability for the city to do anything is being constrained until the electrification process has been completed. So I'll listen next week and find out, or in the next meeting, and find out more about that myself.
Thank you. And then the commercial that is essentially to the right of the subject property, that it was intended to be non-Stanford affiliated. Is that currently the plan, or at least as I remember it, is that currently the plan and how the leasing of that office space going?
Yeah, we have SoftBank is one of the major tenants in one of the buildings. They've fully occupied that building. They've been there for a little bit now. The other two, it is still intended to be non-Stanford. Quite frankly, that was the intent all along from a business model perspective and that we want to hold to that.
That's interesting. I don't think I've seen SoftBank signage on the building. Did I just miss something?
No, no, I think they're very subtle.
Stealthy?
Your word.
Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Further questions or comments from commission?
Thank you.
Thank you. All the things that I had made in my personal notes have already been covered by other commissioners. And I am supportive of this recommendation in the staff report approving and noting that Stanford has been proceeding, what's the exact phrasing here, with good faith compliance with the development agreement. And I will look to the commission for recommendation. Commissioner Farrick?
I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution determining that Stanford University has demonstrated a good faith compliance with the provisions of the 500 El Camino Real Middle Plaza Development Agreement.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrick. Do we have a second?
I'd be happy to second.
Thank you. We have a second from Commissioner Riggs. And with first and second, I will go ahead and call for a vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
Great. And I am also a yes. So that is six yeses, I guess one absence, and we appreciate your presentation. Thank you for being here this evening. All right. I will now move us on to F4, the final component of our public hearing, which is regarding the annual review of the development agreement for Spring Line. More specifically, at this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to determine that Presidio Bay Ventures has demonstrated good faith compliance with the provisions of the Spring Line Mixed Use Development Project Development Agreement located at 1300 El Camino Real for the period of October 2021 through March 2024. Review of the development agreement does not qualify as a project under SEQA. Ms. Sandmeyer, are there any updates to the staff report?
No updates to the staff report. We do have a representative of the applicant here virtually to give a brief overview and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Could we activate Mr. Snyder's microphone so he can give us a brief verbal presentation?
Hi, Mr. Snyder. Can you please turn on your mic? Thank you.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Good evening, Planning Commission and staff. My name is Kyle Snyder, portfolio and asset manager with Presidio Bay Ventures, working primarily on the Spring Line development. Thank you for your time this evening and look forward to providing an update on the Spring Line development and address any questions or comments the Planning Commission may have. As outlined in the annual review letter provided, Presidio Bay Ventures has made significant progress since the previous annual review.
We are not able to hear you.
There.
So I think we got to the point of considerable progress.
Okay, great. There we go. Yes, with four of the five requirements in the development agreement now deemed complete, all payments designated for the Public Amenity Fund have been made totaling about $3.5 million, or $3.5 million in accordance with the city's BMR guidelines. In addition to the lease up of 20 BMR units, the commercial and Luffy payment was also made, the third being the dog park, which is open and operational for public use. And number four, Canopy, which is Spring Line's co-working operator, is open and has a variety of membership options available for the general public. The fifth requirement is in regards to the sales tax guarantee as referenced in the development agreement has not yet been triggered, but will by August 2024. And we have already reached out to the city's finance division to begin the conversation on determining the process so we can be compliant with that as well. And the letter And the letter that I provided, which was on March 19th, it states that 18 of the 20 BMR leases, units have been leased with one unit with a pending application, unit 360, and one unit remaining vacant, unit 309. The last update I received from our team this afternoon, the pending application for unit 360 remains so as the applicant needs to fully complete their application before sending to city housing staff for their review. And unit 309 has received an application and is currently in the screening phase with the third party, the third-party company Housing, Inc. Again, thank you for your time this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And to the extent I'm not able to answer anything this evening, I'll make note of those questions and can provide a written follow-up as, as necessary. So I'll defer to, defer to you for questions.
Thank you very much. Before we move to public comment on this final item, F4, do we have any clarifying questions from commissioners? Seeing none, Ms. Beegan, could you please call for public comment on item F4?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. As a reminder, you're welcome to speak on this public comment period by raising your hand with the hand icon on Zoom or by pressing star nine if by, if calling in by phone. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. As of right now, I do not see any hands raised and have not received any comment cards.
Give it five more seconds, just in case somebody's having technical trouble.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Do not, I can confirm that I've not received any comment cards and do not see any hands raised.
Thank you. With no public comments to add to the discussion tonight, we will make it, we will, I will close public comment and bring us back to the commission for discussion and ultimately for a motion. Do commissioners would, would like to address comments, questions to item F4? Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you. This is a question for Mr. Snyder. First, thank you so much for, for coming this evening to speak with us. I have a question about the item 7.2, the sales tax guarantee. Obviously, this was crafted pre-pandemic when retail environments and office environments and projections associated with those were, were much different. Has it been a struggle to get there on that? And in terms of the income that you had anticipated from the project versus what you're seeing now in the current marketplace? And talk a little bit, if you would, about any challenges in hitting that and anything that, you know, I would want to know about that or the commission would want to know about that.
Sure. Happy to answer those questions. So right now we have all but one of our retail units occupied. K-Feco Market was the most recent retailer to open last Wednesday. And like I provided my update, the, we have one remaining vacant retail restaurant space that is currently in negotiations right now. To answer your question, I think, I think there's a couple of different components to it. I think, you know, I think the quality of the restaurant has, has certainly brought a lot of, of the Menlo Park community to the site that, that maybe otherwise wouldn't have been there. And I, but I, on the flip side, I do think that the, you know, the, the delays in terms of construction and, and that kind of thing for our office tenants has delayed kind of the weekday traffic. So we're still certainly in the ramp up phase as, as it relates to stabilized sales. But, but we're certainly seeing a lot of positive momentum.
Would you say you're satisfied on balance with the demand for space and the, the lease amounts you're getting for the space and, and specific on the retail component?
Yes. And, and I think, you know, a lot of the feedback that we've received from the community frankly relates to kind of wayfinding of the site itself, just because, you know, we have our restaurants on, you know, the, the restaurants are within three different buildings, the North Office Building, the South Office Building and the residential building along Oak Grove. So I think one of the, one of items that we're actively working on is improved wayfinding, both in the sub-training garage, but also at the Plaza Street level as well as, as continue to, you know, become, you know, become more frequent, you know, visitors of the site. And, and for the restaurants, I think that will just come with, with, come over time as people more come to the site more often. But again, I think on, on the whole, we, we are pleased with the performance of our restaurants and are excited to, you know, one more open.
And in what percentage of your office is currently leased?
A hundred percent leased. Wells Fargo is the last tenant that has not yet occupied. Their tenant improvements are under construction at the moment and they are plan, I believe the last I heard, they are planning occupancy by June.
I will say from anecdotal standpoint, I've been to the, the property a number of times for, for dining purposes. I've always enjoyed it and I don't know how I became on different mailing lists, but I think relentless is a term that would apply to your marketing team in terms of different activities activating the space, endeavoring to pull in the community for whatever different activity that you're holding there. And I, I think you're, I think as an organization, the diligence in terms of making that development successful has been showing. I mean, clearly these numbers are, are good, what you're saying about both the office and retail. And then from a geo-resident standpoint, which I consider myself, it's certainly viewed in the community as successful and I've enjoyed my times there as well. So I'll finish my comments with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Commissioner Silverstein?
Yeah, I have a quick follow-up question on the sales tax guarantee. Mr. Snyder, you mentioned that you guys are still in the ramp up phase and I understand that the obligation for that sales tax guarantee is not currently in effect. But do you have a current run rate of what those figures might look like today to at least give us an understanding of whether or not with the, the ramp up understood that, that, that guarantee is either on schedule or not on schedule? Do you have any sense of what that might be today?
I don't, but I can certainly gather that information and provide that as a follow-up and I can coordinate with, with Karina on that.
Yeah, that's fine. This number is not contingent on my approval of the resolution tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Silverstein. I actually would like to ask a follow-up question along the lines of some of the things Commissioner Barnes was asking about in terms of, but with a residential angle to it. I think we, we were asking and discussing questions about occupancy and success factors as it related to the commercial and the retail. How is the project viewing occupancy on the residential side of things? And what are some of the criteria for long-term total occupancy and then retention of, of those residential, of the residents in, in Spring Line?
Sure. So we are at about 95% occupied on the residences and we've been at that, we've been kind of trending at that number for the last five, six months. And, you know, I think that is in large part to the kind of the, the community that, Commissioner Barnes was kind of alluding to. There, there's certainly a, a sense among the residents that they're part of a, a unique community and just the feedback from residents kind of echoes that. Just as an example, they, the residents themselves have kind of formed their own, you know, community potluck night on, on Wednesday evenings that, that we've kind of heard of and our onsite residence management team has, has supported. So I think those are the kind of things that will kind of organically help ensure that we kind of remain at that stabilized, you know, 90, 95% occupied figure. And, you know, as, as we continue to, you know, kind of fine tune our, our resident program, get the remaining restaurants up and running, improve wayfinding and signage, I think the, the, I think the progress that we've made so far and the things that we've learned from it will, will continue to be positive.
Thank you. Appreciate the additional information. Commissioner Farick?
Thank you. I'll be brief. Just a couple of kudos. Any questions I've had have been answered is, just wanted to kind of tack on to Commissioner Barnes' note about how engaging the team has been around activating this project. And I just wanted to specifically call out appreciation for the big kind of grand opening celebrations that you had on kind of a, you know, various audiences and really just making sure you were trying to be as inclusive as possible as you kind of rolled out the opening. So it's, it was great to see. Since I think we might be out of commenters, may I be so bold as to make a motion? Oh, you want me to go first? Okay. I would like, great. I would like to move that we adopt a resolution to determine that Presidio Bay Ventures has demonstrated good faith compliance with the provisions of the Spring Line Mixed Use Development Project at 1300 El Camino Real between October 2021 through March 2024.
Thank you. We have a first from Commissioner Farick. Commissioner Riggs?
Yeah, thank you. I, I do have a question for Mr. Snyder. You will be aware, of course, that we had a couple of, more than a couple of rather involved sessions regarding signage for Spring Line. And Presidio Bay was good enough to significantly help the city of Menlo Park put the signage guidelines together, which I, I think we cannot overstate our appreciation there. I'll admit that I was more than a little concerned that something we did here on the dais might have caused you to remove all signs of color from your signage. Going down the street with a neighbor a week or two ago, I was trying to point out the, the new retail establishments and struggled even to read the brown signs, one after the other, all of them brown, all on earth toned building. And I, I'm going to ask you, I very much hope that we did not influence this removal of all color from the site. But if we did, I don't think I'm the only one that would like to fix that.
Understood. I'll take that feedback back to our construction and design team as I know that they're working on a couple revisions to the signage package primarily in the garage. Again, I mentioned wayfinding earlier, but I will, I will ask this question to see if that, if that was a intentional design choice at the outset or if there was any additional feedback that incorporated. And I can again, circle back on that.
I realize that no one would want to redo signage, but one of the things we so much looked forward to from the Spring Line project was to enliven that long block of El Camino Real. And I have to say, the largest factor of that is the architecture, which stepped forward and did exactly that. I don't think we will ever be less than grateful for this project. But I, but I am crossing my fingers that, that we didn't mis, misguide the, the signage. So yeah, I would appreciate hearing either through staff or, or directly.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs.
Oh, I have one more question.
Oh, please.
Is there anything over there that's open after 10:00 PM?
I, bare bottle, maybe. There's, there's alcohol licensing restrictions that, that are kind of the determining factor on, on how late restaurants stay open. But I will see if there's anything outside of that that would prevent the kitchens from staying open, but, but perhaps the bar being closed.
Yeah, I realize marketing has to determine, you know, if you don't have the market, there's no point, but one of these days I would be very much looking forward to it. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. We still have a first from Commissioner Farick.
I would like to second the motion.
Thank you. And we have a second from Commissioner Riggs. So with that, I will go ahead and call the vote on item F4. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. So that is six yeses. And so we, item F4 passes. And with that, we have reached the end of the public hearing component of our agenda and we'll move on to G, informational items. Mr. Parada?
Yes, thank you. So just briefly here, one update. So as I think the commission is aware, we have two vacancies coming up on the commission due to expiring terms that are, for two commissioners are ineligible for reappointment. So those applications are due Wednesday, the 27th by 5:00 PM. I just want to make a plug for more community outreach in terms of if anyone is interested in applying to do so. And then with that, we are tracking the next couple of meetings. So we do have a small break. The next meeting will be April 15th. And if you give me one second here, we are tracking a multifamily residential project on that meeting and, and we still haven't sent the public hearing notice. So there's a number of items in flux. We'll, so stay tuned there, but do want to flag that the next meeting is the 15th. And that concludes my updates. Happy to take any general questions. Very mindful of agendized topics and discussion though.
I, I have a very nuanced general question, which goes back to what Commissioner Riggs said earlier. It is also my understanding that a, as per Roberts Rules of Order, a majority vote requires 50 plus 1% of the voting members. This is not for right now, but just wanted to get clarity between city staff and our legal team on making sure that we know exactly what we need to pass certain items.
That is totally taken and I, we'll, we'll get that clarity next time. It makes sense. 50 plus one is the majority. And yeah, we will get that clarity the next meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Silverstein. Any other follow-up questions on schedule? All right. For that April 15th meeting, I will be, also be chairing as Chair Doe will not be able to attend the April 15th meeting. Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, I thought it was important to share before we adjourn that the new pastry shop on Santa Cruz Levant is open until 11:00 PM. I'm going there now.
Outstanding. All right. Commissioner Farick?
Thank you. Just a quick question. I think I, it's Commissioner Riggs and Barnes that are turning off, is that right? And is the last meeting the 15th or will it be the next one?
Yeah, good question, if I may, through.
Please.
Vice Chair Schindler. It, it'll be through the 29th. So we have two meetings in April. Due to scheduling and a couple of various things we were juggling, we moved our meetings to 15th and the 29th. And so the 29th will be Commissioner Barnes' and Commissioner Riggs' last meeting. An appointment will occur and then the new members will take their seat in May.
Thank you. And then just one kind of point of question for you, Mr. Parada. If we were to gather to celebrate or honor their service to the city, would it, as long as we avoided any agendized item, would that be allowed or not? Any commissioner business?
It's a great question. It's acceptable, no discussion on any agendized topics, no topics of planning commission discussion. I, I think. I think we need to be very careful, but I think as, after the meeting, if the commissioners wanted to gather independently, that would be acceptable, just yes, very mindful of respecting Brown Act and other rules. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farick. Very important question. I agree. All right. And with that, if there are no other comments or questions, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:32. Thank you.
Thank you.